Good evening and welcome to the June 28th regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. On your computer, you can click the raise your hand icon on the right-hand side of your screen. When the public comment period opens, you will be unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting by and comment by calling the number in meeting ID, all of which are shown at the bottom of this screen. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak. Again, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you are in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Again, you'll have three minutes. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loia, can we get a roll call?
Yeah, good evening. Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
And Chair of the State Elcock?
Here.
And I'll note that Commissioner Tagney and Commissioner Figueroa and Commissioner Mayor are absent.
Okay, and at the staff's table, we have David Loia, our Director of Community Development. And is anybody else, is Joe gonna, Joe Matier going to come? No, you're gonna handle the whole thing? Okay, good, okay. Let's move on to oral communication. This time is provided for members of the public to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements, however, any request that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda or research or or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public who would like to address something not on the commi, the agenda?
Can you hear me? My name is Joanne McGary. I occasionally go by the moniker of McGreta when I'm carrying my earth flag around because I'm channeling Greta Thunberg and her climate activism. But today I want to speak to the Planning Commission about a little frustration I have in regards to a certain property that was a major topic of discussion a few months ago, and that's the Allen Building up on G Street next to Barnes Pharmacy and Arcade Theater Lounge. And I walked by there today. It has continued to degrade. My understanding at the time, there was a Planning Commission discussion about a person who was wanting to buy that building and get a permit for a dispensary on the main floor of that building. And that was a few months ago, and I think the Planning Commission allowed that to go through. Subsequently, I've heard that that's not happening anymore. There's signs in the window, there's boarded front doors. It's pretty dilapidated looking and kind of an eyesore. I called one of the realty numbers that was in the window to ask about what was available for lease there, and not a lot of information was provided to me. I had come into the City Hall and had asked for Joe Matier, who's apparently away on vacation, because he and I had talked in the past about what is happening with that Allen Building on G Street. And so he wasn't available and no one else could answer the question, but I was given the name of the, or the phone number of the assessor's office that I could contact or go to to find out who is the current owner. I just find it a little frustrating that a lot, a lot of time was spent in the Planning Commission on this building, which is an important resource in the downtown area. And there's a lot of things that can be done, but the protection of privacy of the private property, and my curiosity as a citizen of Arcata and somebody who's interested in seeing, you know, nice development and and things going into vacant buildings, I was just sort of dismayed that I was being thwarted at every turn to find out what's going on. And so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the Planning Commission, especially when it comes to long periods of time, you know, approving something that is put out a public notice, and then all of a sudden, things change and we're not knowing about that. So I, I'm just sort of concerned about that process, and I wanted to have a little more transparency and upfront information being given, you know, after the Planning Commission approves something and then it's not going to happen. I don't know if you're aware that it didn't happen or or what, but it's just a little frustrating to a citizen, a concerned citizen about our downtown area and some of those vacant buildings and the look of it right now and what our needs are and what's going to happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the commission on items not on the agenda?
Hello, Commissioners. I've never seen this much of a shell before, but I guess it's summertime, so. Anyway, Chris Richards here. I don't have a whole lot for this part of the of the meeting, but I did want to let everybody know in this public format that I sent out some emails earlier today. I tried out your guys' new addresses and included you with the City Council and Karen Deemer, City Manager, and putting out a request to try to get a more detailed and complete packet around this grant, deadline schedule, I'll try to get it all compiled. I've suggested they do it in a chart form and that so everybody, the community members, the City Council, the, the you folks here can all have something to know where our current status is and what we can do. And I know David has that information buried somewhere in his paperwork or his mine, so I'm hoping he can help coordinate this. I don't know if he, I didn't include you in the, in the email, but I'm sure Karen will get you privy with that and we can talk more about it. So, anyway, I think it's an important tool that, moving forward for a successful process, I think we've got to make sure which direction we're going with all of that, you know, legal jargon with the discipline that we got to do to figure out what are we going to pay back, what can we extend out, you know, what do, can we do some quick zoning amendments for, to, you know, complete the housing element requirement and all the stuff. I've, I've detailed some information myself, but I don't have it all, obviously, with some, listening to conversations and bits and pieces. It'd be nice to have something the city puts out that would detail this very clearly for everybody moving forward to this, these next steps so we can plan. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. A few different things. We now have seven letters that the Planning Commission may have, may not have received that are definitely not in the packet. The, some of them I've received from private parties, some I've collected otherwise. We were promised that they would be in the packets. There is a problem two weeks ago. We understand that that problem has been fixed, but they were not in the packets for this meeting. This letter, signed by 23 people, dated May 23rd, has not been in the packet. The larger issue tonight is, came out of the City Council meeting last week on Wednesday. It was a very long meeting. I'm going to put the section to which I'm referring to on the arcata1.com website. It's not there currently, but it will be there in the next day or two. The, there is a section of about 25 minutes that staff reported that I encourage the Planning Commission to watch. The, within the section, David Loia said it has to do with the development of the Form-Based Code, which I think the Planning Commission knows that we've been asking, we, the public, the commission has been asking for, for months in some form, even a sample of it. David Loia said, pretty shortly after reports were released, I think he's referring to the, the draft plan, "There were significant questions in the community, significant questions by the Plan Commission, are we really doing a Form-Based Code? I don't think there's ever been any question." I've looked it through all the transcripts. I found, you know, some questions about other things, questions about ministerial review. The concern that David Loia expressed, if they produce a draft-based code, that's money I can't spend on some other document, he said this other times also. If ultimately the Planning Commission, the City Council direct staff to not do a Form-Based Code. So he said, "I asked our consultant," and I've said this in many public settings, he said, "We asked our consultant to quote-unquote 'tap the brakes' on some of these work products." I asked this. Who authorized David Loia to tap the brakes on the Form-Based Code? The, earlier in the April 12th packet, there's a letter, oh dear. He said specifically to Judith, the Vice Chair, that, uh, excuse me. He says, "Dear, thanks Judith. I do want to highlight that the City Council and the Planning Commission both gave direction for the Form-Based Code approach. This isn't me pushing for an outcome, this is literally direction from the decision-makers." David refers regularly to direction from the City Council. He was given City Council direction for this. Thank you.
Thank you. David, is there anyone?
Yeah, there is, thank you. Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening, nice to see you all here again. I am just going to reinforce what Chris Richards said because I had originally sent a whole bunch of comments about things that needed to be done to find out more about the grant deadlines, the specific work being done, with the extensions, whether they'd been requested, what the status was, how much we had to lose, did we have backups if that happened, et cetera, and were these deadlines really as critical as they appeared, as David indicated? Were we going to lose half a million dollars? Are we going to have our housing element disqualified? There's all kinds of problems. So, I have asked for clarification of that. I spoke actually with Karen Deemer today, and she said, indeed, we will be answering those questions so that we know exactly what grant wants, asks for what, what the deadlines are, whether there are extensions, whether we've asked for those extensions, and what we have to lose if we don't meet the deadlines. So she indicates that the city would be responding to my comments, just actually reinforced by what Chris said. So I think that would be very helpful because these deadlines are being promoted as the reason for why we have to speed through this at such a rapid rate. And therefore, I think it's important to know whether this is a real issue or not, or the extent to which the next, an issue. We're obviously having to postpone the study session because of people being on vacation. That is also a delay. So we have to fit that in as well, and we'll probably want more than one study session. But, anyway, enough said for now. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Jane.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, staff and hello, Planning Commission. This is Jim Becker, and I had a couple of questions. First, I would like to ask if there's been a new date set for the joint study session between the Planning Commission and the City Council? I do realize it's still be working out, but wondering if there's anything tentative at this point that we might be able to put on our calendar. In addition, I was wondering if there's any effort to target deed restriction units within the gateway? If so, could these targets possibly mimic the distribution of RHNA's in the six housing element? For example, could the deed restrictions be encouraged to not only be toward low and very low-income categories, possibly moderate-income categories, and therefore encouraging the city to possibly move more quickly to satisfy the RHNA's from the six-cycle housing element? Anyway, that's something to pose, and I'm not sure if there's an answer for that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Sherry, and I'm looking forward to buying a home in Arcata, soon I hope. At the May 24 meeting, the Planning Commission requested that draft Gateway chapters for employment, art and culture, open space and mobility be brought back for further discussion in the next meeting, which was on June 14. Those items did not appear then, and they are not on the agenda for tonight. It appears that the Planning Commission is not setting the agenda for their meetings. If agenda requests are honored, it could relieve a lot of the tension and the appearance of a lack of transparency that is occurring at these meetings, both Planning Commission and City Council. Thank you.
We can't hear you yet. Can you try and unmute, please?
Patricia, are you there?
Do you want to move on, or?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on. So, maybe just one comment. David did send out a, what's it called, a Google Calendar or?
Yeah, there was a doodle poll that came out of the City Manager's office to try and find a new date. Several dates were suggested. I don't think we're at the point where we have a, a date to release in terms of, you know, when that is going to be. It would just add confusion at this point, because there's not a final date set, so I would, you know, not disclose that at this point.
So we're working on that. It's hard to coordinate all these people. So, onto the consent calendar. The only items are the May 24th and June 14th minutes. Do we need to pull those minutes, or can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve May 24, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion by White.
I'll second that.
Second by Barstow. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So this evening, we have one public comment item. We're being asked to approve the design review permit for Brown, for the Brown Remodel Edition at 60 East 7th Street. Before we get a report, do we have any Commissioners who have an ex parte communications to disclose?
Do you want to approve June 14th? I was, yes, I do.
Oh, hold on. That motion was just for May 24th. Can we also get a, can you?
Can we do it even though I wasn't present? Sure.
Yes.
I, I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 14th as well.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now we're going to move on, thank you. So do we have a staff report for, oh, any ex parte communication for 60 East 7th Street? No? Okay, can we get a staff report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Before you tonight is a design review. We haven't had one of these in a while, so you'll have to, you know, dig deep into your memory on how to do this process, but we have a design review project for the Brown Remodel Edition at 60 East 7th Street, and staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take a staff report, any public comment. The applicant is here tonight to comment potentially, and to adopt a CEQA Class 1 exemption and approve the project with conditions of approval. Did prepare a brief PowerPoint presentation to walk you through the project, just for orientation on where the project is located in the Bayview neighborhood. This is 7th Street, here's Union, and the project is near the corner of Union and 7th on the north side there. This is a plan sheet out of your, your packet showing the existing structure and a plan view of where the proposed changes would be on the front porch and a remodeled area here of the house. There are additional details in the plan set that talk about the interior space, but again, just for reference, the design review process for your review is really only about the exterior space. The project was designed by a local architect and is brought to you by the homeowner tonight. Again, out of the plan set, and I do have the full plan set, but I'm going to focus on just the areas tonight that are being amended in my presentation, but if you have questions about it, we can dig into those plans in more detail. Here's the front view, where you can see the proposed front view here. The amendments relate to the porch, modest porch currently with stairs, and the new proposal has a much more prominent porch that, in staff's view, does comport a lot more with the, many of the craftsman-style architectures that are in the neighborhood. And then in addition to promote the, the interior remodel, this space here is revised just slightly with a new roofline and new facade. So again, maybe one of the shortest staff reports you've heard me make in quite some time. Staff's recommendation is that you adopt a Class 1 CEQA exemption for existing facilities and to approve the project with those conditions of approval that are included in your packet tonight. Be happy to answer any questions and suggest you open it to public comment after that.
Do we have any questions for David at this point? Okay, if not, we will open this up to public comment with the applicant or her representative like to have the first slot.
This is my house. I've lived here for a long time, and it's very old, and I'm proposing some modest upgrades that will make my life better and also be cuter as you walk by. That's it.
Right, thank you. Does any member of the public like to comment?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. Again, I walk by and anything to make something look better or cuter or, you know, fix, fixing things up is a, is a great thing. This does call to mind, when I first started attending these meetings, the idea that we no longer have a design review committee, and with all that's going to be happening, I think that's really an interesting phenomenon, so that you're not necessarily having to be the first go-around on some of these design review concepts. But in far, as far as this particular project goes, upgrading and making it cuter for people to walk by and look at is great. But I just think that's interesting, this whole design review concept, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Sandra, do you have anything else that you'd like to add? No, you're good, okay. We will close the public comment portion of this meeting, and do you, the Commissioners have any comments, questions, maybe a motion?
I would like to just say I think it's a great project. I think it's going to improve the house. I think it seems to fit with the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. Feels like staff is in agreement, so if we're at that point, I would like to make a motion to approve this project.
A motion by Davies, do we have a second?
Before I second it, I just want to say that it's, it's, it looks like a nice upgrade to the house. And my only comment would be that I noticed that you're proposing a gravel walkway from the parking area to the, the front of the house. And on a practical level, I don't know how, how well that will serve you. Gravel's not great to walk on. If you ever wear high heels, could be a problem. If you were to want to move something in and out of the house, like a refrigerator or something like that, it would increase the degree of difficulty. But I just, that's just a comment, and I will happily second the motion.
We have a first by Davies and a second by Barstow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So now we'll move on to our business item, where we consider the housing chapter of the Gateway Area Plan. Director Loia, do we have a staff report, or do you want to kick this off?
Yeah, I do have a staff report, and I kind of wanted to pick up also on where we left off the discussion at our last meeting regarding the, the process that we're working through. I think that there was, you know, potentially a little bit of, you know, confusion in, you know, the way that it was being described and that sort of thing, and so I wanted the opportunity to share with the Planning Commission a little bit more detail and, and some graphics to help explain the process. I went through this with the City Council at their last meeting last week, so they got this as well, and just wanted to provide you with the same information. In addition, you know, I've added to it a little bit that...
This is not on the agenda.
That it's his staff report.
I have a suggestion how to handle this. In its entirety, with public comment, discussion, and staff report, and then go to this item with a separate section of staff report, a separate section of public comment, and a separate discussion.
With all due respect, Chair, the working outline is in your packet, attached on Packet Page 27, running through Packet Page 29, and if you'd like me to continue, I will, but if you wish me to stop...
It's not listed as an agenda item by title.
Excuse me, sir. This is a Planning Commission meeting, we allow the Chair to...
Very good.
Thank you.
Let's take a stop.
My preference is to let David continue to give us more details with where we left off, as there was some confusion about the scheduling. I think that would help inform the rest of our discussion.
Can you turn your mic on?
Can you say everything Oliver gave, please?
Yeah, my, my preference would be to let David continue with giving us more information that would, as he said, clear up some of the discussions we were having at our last meeting. I think, I think that would be helpful, and I, I think if it's into the timeline that's in our agenda packet, that would, that would be my preference.
Commissioner Barstow?
Yeah, I'm actually okay either way, whether we do it now or later. I'm not, you know, I don't really know the technicalities about the agendizing things. This is a discussion, it's not a, an action. I'm not certain that a discussion has to be agendized.
Commissioner White?
I'm with John either way.
I will just point out for, excuse me, I will just point out for the Commission's deliberations as well, that fully half of your staff report pertains to this information, starting on Packet Page 24, identifying with the timeline and process. There's the timeline, and the process goes below that, and the attachments that are referenced in this section are the attachments that I'm referring to in this portion of the staff report. So it's very germane to the topic. It's addressed in the staff report, and I believe that the objection the community member has raised is completely invalid. So, you can, you can take the, take, take action as you like, though.
If I may say, I'm not against speaking about it. I just think it should be separate with two separate public comment sections. I'm, I'm all for hearing about it, but it should be separate with two separate discussions and two separate speaking comments.
Well, do we want to take public comment when we're done with this part of it?
Sure.
All right.
Okay. So, just to be clear, so I have, understand the, the direction, which portion of this staff report would you like me to give?
Let's start with what you were, you were on the overview, right? Page 27?
Okay.
Is that where you're going?
I, I will continue, yes.
It makes sense to start there to me. Let's go ahead.
Okay, so at our last meeting, there was some discussion around, you know, the process for review of these materials. We have both the Gateway Plan, which is a new element of the, the general plan, as well as several refresh and updates to general plan sections, some of those a little bit more substantive than others. And so the, the question came up, as I understood it, and again, there may have been some, some confusion on my part or misunderstanding on my part, but the way that I read the discussion and the deliberations that came up around process was whether we should be doing concurrent review with iterative revisions of the document based on different committees' input, or whether we could continue with concurrent review, which was the, the process that we were going through to start with. Part of the reason why, again, we were on concurrent review, and this ties into some of the concerns that were raised in early oral communications, was because, you know, staff has been tasked with executing this work, bringing it forward for the decision-makers' reviews, based on... makers' reviews based on prior decisions that were made. You know, we took, you know, grants, we made commitments within the housing element, so on and so forth. All of these had timelines and so staff is trying to bring this information forward to the decision makers in, in a timeframe that met to the best of our abilities those timelines. I do want to reiterate as a side note here, the commenter who spoke to Karen's commitment to sharing this in a format that everyone can see, we'll have that up on our, our website frequently asked questions and we'll share it out to the planning commission, city council. So just to kind of share with you, whoops, wrong controller, the difference between concurrent and sequential timeframes for review. All of these elements of the, the general plan are coming out as first drafts and those will be reviewed by planning commission and any of the committees that choose to, to take action on them. Some of these, the Gateway Area Plan and, for example, has been to most of the committees multiple times already and we are hoping to bring those again to them. But to get these out to the community, to get them to the decision makers, to bring them forward to you as one of the higher recommending, highest recommending bodies in the city, efficiently, we're bringing these out as they come out in draft form. So this is a process we think is going to take one to three months to get through this, the, the review of these first initial documents. What I was suggesting last time is that staff would collate these comments and make those available to the city council in a manner that would allow them to make decisions around policy questions that then they could direct changes to these documents. The city council would receive this first pass, so all the committees, the commission will have had an opportunity to make recommendations under this first pass to the city council. This could take approximately another half a month for them to review for a total of one and a half to three and a half months. And then if second pass is needed, the city council says, hey, we really need the committees and commission to review this. And in fact, the environmental review portion will have a timeline that would allow for that secondary review anyway. You know, we'd have another pass. It would take, you know, somewhere between a total of three to four and a half months. Best case scenario, this is assuming that everybody made decisions as soon as they saw the documents. Could take longer. So what that basically looks like is the planning commission and all committees make review, those changes are brought to the city council, the changes are then, whoops, sorry. You know, there's a, a decision on those changes and then, sorry, I'm just reorienting. This could have a second pass again to, to send those back to planning commission and committees as necessary. So this is sort of a concurrent review process. The only change, the only difference between concurrent review and the sequential review is the number of passes and the length of time. So to get the committees to review those, if we waited for the commission's review before, until the committees had seen them, you're going to be waiting about that first one to three months where you could have been reviewing them concurrently. Those come to you and that second month, if you have no changes, then we forward those on to the city council. And so we could be back in that two and a half to four and a half month timeframe if we went one pass through this system. The iterative or, or sequential review has the option or the alternative or the likelihood that there would be changes however, and so that would look like, you know, this where you'd send them back. Because not all the committees meet on a monthly basis, some of them meet every other month, we'd be talking a month and a half minimum, depending on when you got your review done and said, okay, we want to see these changes and we want to hear what the committees think of them. That went back to the city council review, you know, that would be approximately four and a half to six months for that process. And then to carry this out one step further, if the city council makes changes and there's a cycle there, you could have, excuse me, you could have, you know, eight to 11 months, best case scenario with a two pass system. So difference from four and a half to eight to 11 months because of the way that the meetings fall. Now, all of this can be amended, obviously, if the, you know, committees decide to take special meetings, which to date, you know, they have not, you know, we've, we've requested but they have not sought to do that. But at the same time, at the, the joint study session between the committee chairs and the city council, every single committee chair at the desk, at the seat I was at, we split into two groups, so there was one group, every single chair said that this is very important work and they want to commit to, to completing this review. So I think that there, there's the commitment there. So again, staff is recommending a one, one or two pass concurrent review that would allow for, at the end of the process, the planning commission to have seen recommendations from all the committees as well as the, the council-
Recording in progress.
-before making their final, excuse me, I'm not sure why the recording stopped, started. Before making their final recommendation to the city council.
Recording stopped.
Okay, so, so how do we review these changes? What I was suggesting last time is that staff would be bringing a, you know, basically an Excel spreadsheet. It would have all of these changes. You know, I did some, some thinking about this based on the conversation at the planning commission meeting last time and it struck me that, you know, many of the changes that we're hearing are either non-controversial, they're, you know, grammatical changes to, you know, the way that things are phrased and/or they affirm policy that's already in the documents. And so what we can do with those is, for example, here, is to identify those in line. So the, you know, planning commission ultimately would see these in line, the community would see these in line. And if I can figure out a way that is, you know, simple enough to track them by color coding, so we know who made the recommendation, whether it came from the planning commission or it came from one of the committees, it's coming from the public, so on and so forth, so that you could have an easy reference at a glance as to, you know, where those changes are coming. This particular change is in the growth management element. It's related to annexations and there was a conversation about adding a seventh bullet point here that would talk about city annexations to kind of implement the green belt policy so that we're taking lands around us and annexing them into the city of Arcata, being held by the city of Arcata, those lands being held by the city of Arcata or other entities who are holding them for green belt purposes and trying to incorporate that in as a, a reason why we would allow an annexation beyond just, you know, development and/or, as was in this policy before, resource and habitat management purposes. So it's non-controversial. We've already talked about this in the community, that this is a policy that we want to have. We can implement those simply by this inline process, which I think is where part of the confusion came from because I said, well, we're not going to show the changes in line. I think there are several changes we can show in line. For other changes that either have conflicting recommendations or they don't already clearly align to policy that is in the plan, those, the most efficient way for the commissions and the committees and the council to review those is in a format such as this where staff presents all of the different options that have been provided. And so you'll see here a table that talks about what element the issue is in, what the topic is, what the recommendation is, who the source for that recommendation was. Ultimately, there'll be a planning commission recommendation and then some discussion points around what the policy implications are. So for example, in the Gateway Area Plan, this element, building height has been a hot topic for the community. One of the areas within the plan, under the proposal, allows for eight story buildings. Folks have said, hey, that's too big, doesn't fit with Arcata, let's bring it down a bit. But it's all over the map as to what bring, bring it down means, like some people say no higher than three, some people have said no higher than four. So this is a way where we can frame this discussion, identify forward the conversations that have been had and where the, where the comments came from and the city council can then tease apart the policy implications, the planning commission can tease apart the policy implications of those decisions before making a recommendation to council. So this is the framework that I was suggesting for last time, that, you know, you have that, all of the information before you, it's just that I don't have to go in and craft specific language. My staff or the consultants don't have to spend time and energy going in and crafting specific language when it may never get adopted or recommended or supported by a subsequent So lastly, I just wanted to tie things together. Looking at the timeline that's in your packet, on packet page 24, this is the timeline that we've consistently updated. The first thing I wanted to point out is we had a PC regular meeting on 6/21/22 and I think somehow this, this error got carried forward. You don't have a meeting on that date, it's actually 6/28, that's today. So I bolded that, that change. But what I wanted to show you in addition to this is we did a little bit of additional work to try and see, you know, how does, how does the flow of this information happen between the planning commission and the, the committees? This is a lot of information packed into a very tight package here, but I just want to point out to you what we've got going on here. Here's the framework that you have in your packet, there's the timeline that you have in your packet with the various gateway topics and general plan topics. And then on the side, within the same month as the category, so here's July, you have two meetings scheduled in July, the 12th is going to be canceled. Within that July timeframe, we have several committee meetings and at these various committee meetings, we can bring forward the color quoted documents. And so Economic Development Committee is looking at the Gateway Plan, specifically employment, for example, on the 24th and we're asking them if they want to formalize their recommendation, that could come back, I'm sorry, on July 5th, that could come back to the, you know, the planning commission, you know, we could just report out on what their, their recommendation was if they made one. Similarly, for parks and recreation, forest management, et cetera, we can bring these elements forward and present them to them. And then what I'm recommending is that the committees each take a turn at the gateway. Many of them, as I said earlier, have already seen it twice. They've had, you know, fairly robust conversations about what they'd like to see in it, what they'd like to see for community amenities and so on and so forth. And so this would be an opportunity for them to, if they wish, to take formal action on the drafts that they see before them now. If they can do that, if they decide, yes, we'll do that within this July-August timeframe, it would be reasonable to, to have the planning commission have that information back before you're making a, a recommendation. So it's possible, you know, this is kind of that best case scenario, it's possible that we get on that streamlined timeframe of two to four and a half months to get through that first pass if the committees decide to make their recommendations now. If not, then before the documents are adopted, before they're fully adopted, you'll have another crack at them anyway on the, the first pass with the, or second pass rather with the concurrent review. So I just wanted to take a little bit of time to clarify, you know, what that looks like and have an opportunity to, to explain in time, you know, in, in the time series so that you could see that in real time so it didn't, you know, we could clear up any confusion that may have come up last time. So with that, I'll turn it over to the planning commission if you have questions about this and I think I heard that you'd like to open it up to public comment before we move on to the second piece.
Sure. First, can we get a copy of that? So we have planning commission with, go ahead.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I, I suppose I have some concerns about the extent to which our discussions here at the planning commission are drifting into a place that feels like we're really slowing this process down sort of unnecessarily and I'm, I'm concerned about what the implications are of, of taking too much time for grammatical changes or addressing language that's already elsewhere in this plan. I appreciate David, this work to try and make clear what this process could look like. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you could speak at all to what some of the implications are to the city, from the state, from funding. I have concerns about the extent to which the state is starting to green light projects and I'm concerned about us taking so much time to make this perfect that we're going to lose the control that we have to exert over how we address housing in Arcata.
Yeah, so there's a, a lot in there. I'll try and be very succinct. We did in, you know, preparation for, you know, some of the past meetings bring forward some of the information about the various acts that have been adopted since 2017 at the state level, Housing Crisis Act, the Housing Accountability Act, we brought those, those forward and they do continuously limit cities authority for discretionary review of projects. And so part of this planning process has really been to try and get ahead of, you know, state and be able to plan for, you know, Arcata's future build out, you know, as a community, the way that we're, the way that we want to see it built out. In terms of the, you know, the grant funding sources and all that, I mean, it's, it's going to be hard to, you know, track. I feel like I've brought this forward orally a couple of times. I'll, I'll give a super high level overview of where we're at with that. But I want to say before I jump into that, that these timelines and the, you know, the items that we brought forward, the, you know, the Housing Accountability Act, for example, Housing Crisis Act, the, you know, commitments in the housing element, this is all for information. You know, this is for the decision makers to, to consider when they're making decisions about, you know, how they want to make those decisions. You know, ultimately, if, you know, the intent of that information is not to, you know, push forward and, and, you know, overstep the process that the decision makers need to go through to make decisions, it's just so that they're aware of the accountability associated with, with making those decisions. We have three grants that are, you know, were awarded at different times that are associated with this project. The first one was awarded SB 2 funds, about $160,000 and the deadline for the, the deliverable on those funds is the end of this year, December 31. The state, we've had communications with them, they've said that they're not going to extend that deadline, that they believe it's embedded in statute and that they don't have the authority to extend it. They said if we do not have a deliverable at that time, that they will then initiate enforcement. And based on my understanding of what that enforcement would look like, there'd probably be a lot of technical assistance, if you will, to help us become compliant. And I do think that if we can demonstrate that we've been making strides towards completion, getting through the process, moving through these chapters, you know, the general plan and, you know, and getting to decision points, that that enforcement is going to be, you know, lighter than it could otherwise be. The state now has a, you know, staff where once they had 12 under the policy unit that managed the, you know, housing element compliance, they now have a staff of over 100 in the housing enforcement unit. So they've gotten fairly serious and pretty rigorous about ensuring that jurisdictions are complying. We are not going to meet our housing element timelines. There's absolutely no way at this point that we can meet those because they come in the middle of this year in August. And so recognizing we're not going to be done by then and, and, you know, to the suggestion of can we just break off a piece of this, we really can't because for CEQA, it's all win big project. You can't piecemeal it and so we still need to complete the environmental work that evaluates the entire program before we can implement those changes. But again, I think the state will look at that and recognize that we are, you know, pushing forward. The thing that we, that we do have less control around is if a developer decides to come in and use one of these Housing Accountability Acts or SB 35 or something to, to do a project. We are required under the Housing Accountability Act, for example, to approve a project within five meetings maximum if it complies with our general plan and zoning standards. And if we have objective design criteria, we can apply those. If we do not have objective design criteria, we cannot apply those to, to modify the project. That's my understanding. Now, there's some legal debate around that and some folks who are feeling a little bit more risk tolerant are suggesting that you test the state on that. It's not generally been the city of Arcata's approach. There's a second grant we received, LEAP, that has a deadline. We're currently working on asking for an extension because it was based on our timeline that we put forward, which actually is June this month, 2022. So we're seeking to extend that and I think we will get an extension. Their, their grant deadlines aren't until 2023 and so I, I don't see why they wouldn't allow for an extension through 2023. The Salk grant, the Sustainable Cultural Lands Conservation Grant that we received, it has built into it a one-year extension if we need it, so we can go out to, I think it was 2023 or early 2024 for that one, I'd have to look at the table. So there is some flexibility within these timelines, but all of the granting agencies have said that if we don't perform, there are provisions within the, the contracts that we sign that we have to pay the money. we sign that we have to pay the money back. And so again, this is information that the public, the council, the Planning Commission needs to make their decisions. Whether the, you know, council ultimately decides, hey, we want to stick to some of these timelines, or whether they say, you know, we are still in process and we're willing to find the money to repay these grant sources that we just couldn't perform on for, you know, many of the reasons we're outside of our control. And so, you know, that's still an open question that needs to be, you know, resolved at the policy level for the most part, and certainly your recommendation on that would be important. I think I'm going to stop it there.
David, how much is the LEAP? I got the dollar amount for the SB2, which is $160,000, and the LEAP was how much?
LEAP is $65,000, I believe. And then the Salk Grant is $250,000.
So conceivably, if we did not meet that deadline, the only grant that we might have to pay back would be the $160,000, is that correct?
Well, I guess, I don't know. It just depends on how long it takes. I mean, but that is the one that is at first risk of being paid back, yeah.
So when you talk about initiative enforcement, which could be your example of a developer coming in and being able to do, have their weight with us, if you will, also the penalty of having to pay back, is there anything in between there? Like, you know, obviously, like the example that's been given, I think, in the past, we're not thumbing our nose at them like, say, Long Beach or whatever. And we've consistently met our goals and have been meeting the RENA numbers accordingly. So does that count for anything if we're like halfway through the process and we can show that there has been extenuating circumstances? We have a timeline, we have milestones that we're meeting along the way, and we have a plan?
Yeah, I think it will. Again, you know, the first, the SB2 money, when we talked to HCD staff about that one, you know, they're not going to tell us right now, you know, don't worry about it, we'll go light on you. They're going to hold our feet to the fire. But I do believe that when we get to that point, that, you know, their enforcement will largely be based on, you know, where we're at in that process, how well we can articulate the process that we went through and how far we've come. So, yeah, you know, none of the granting agencies have said, hey, don't worry about it, we're not concerned. They've all said, we've got serious concerns, you're falling behind. But they also, their objective is not to punish the city. Their objective is to get housing built, and so they're going to work with us to get that done.
Thank you. I just have one comment before I open it up. Excuse my voice. I almost feel like we're overstepping what we were appointed to do. We're really here for land use issues, and we really kind of almost have the luxury of not really caring where the money comes from. I mean, that's, we were appointed for land use issues, and that's why I'm just really happy to see this process. And I do think we're asking questions that we weren't appointed to ask, but I guess, I just want to make sure, or I want to ask, I would really like it, in order to do our job right, if we could kind of see everything before it goes to the council, we can kind of give it a one-over because we are, that's what we were appointed to do. I do think we have some really great committees, and I trust them. I just wish, I'm really hoping we have time for us to go over what their suggestions and add ours or change ours or do it. That's hoping. And then I'm also hoping at that very, at the very end, that's going to be a lot of things for us to go over. If we could get that before, the Thursday before the meeting, and if we could even have a week to go over all of that, that would be, that would be great. Even this one package took me about two days to do. So, and I love the color-coded, and you can email that to us, you know. And then, so on here, are you, is it staff recommend, not on here, on the color-coded, is staff recommendations going to be color-coded also? Or is it just going to be the committees and the commission?
Yeah, committee, commission, and any public, you know, suggestions that are, you know, recommended for incorporation, you know, that, again, comport with the policy that's already outlined. And the staff recommendation, I guess, if you will, is the, you know, the uncolored original underlying strikeout. So, yeah, I guess if we come up with additional recommendations beyond, you know, beyond that, I suppose we will figure out a way to color-code that. But I think that basically what we're, what we're trying to do at this point is, you know, we've given it our best shot based on, you know, our professional knowledge and understanding, history with the city. Now it's turned over to the committees and commissions, and that those, we don't, I don't envision making lots of changes that are just staff-driven at this point.
Well, you're going to have to make them anyway. You might as well start keeping track. So what do we all think about, do we, are we, is this the process? Are we okay with this process? Can we stop talking about it and get to work? What do you think?
Yeah, we have so many balls in the air right now, and time is limited. I think we get bogged down here sometimes in considerations of details that really we'll have, we'll decide later on when we address the land use code changes that are needed to implement the Gateway Plan. You know, I think the process that David has laid out is good. I really like that, the correlation of the recommendations from all the committees and the citizens and the commission. My suggestion would be to keep that up and immediately add whatever recommendations come in and to make sure that we get that on a periodic basis. Also, it might be a good idea to post that on the city website, because we've had comments from people who wanted to know what was happening. I think that would be a good way to demonstrate that the, their suggestions and comments and recommendations aren't just, you know, floating off into the void, and everyone be able to see what's happening. Anyhow, you know, I think we're on a good path, but I think we need, well, time is of the essence in this case, and we really don't have time for the Planning Commission to see every change come back after it's made. It would get into a horribly slow cycle of reviewing changes. And I do have a question. I'm assuming that we will see all of the recommendations and so on before it goes to the City Council.
Yeah, the, you know, again, it just depends on when the committees decide to act, if you wish to stay on this timeline, you know, and if the City Council wishes to stay on this timeline. And so it is possible that, you know, when the, you know, for example, I'll point out on the specific example, the infrastructure safety and public safety elements, you know, are going to come out, we're anticipating at this point by August 9th. But the, you know, Public Safety Committee meets in, okay, no, I'm sorry, this is a poor example because they actually meet in August. So it's possible, oh, they meet after you. So the Public Safety Committee is not going to see this before you see it. What I guess I'm suggesting is if the Public Safety Committee, you know, if the Planning Commission wants to see the Public Safety Committee's recommendation, you know, strongly encourage them to have a special meeting. And if they wish to have a special meeting so that they can make a recommendation to you, that will keep us on this timeline. The other alternative is we just accept, we're not on this timeline. That's, it's not happening. And this is assuming that the Public Safety Committee will see that chapter and then at that same meeting be able to make you a recommendation. If they can't, then it's September before they meet again. And so you're not going to see a recommendation from them likely until December, September, October, I'm sorry, September, October. So it really, it's dependent on when those committees see the element for the first time. But this two-pass system that I'm talking about, ultimately, before there's a final recommendation to the City Council, you'll have seen everything that's on the table. And then once that's on the table and the City Council makes its, you know, its final decision on the document changes that we're moving forward with, the, there's still a period of time. We'll be going through, you know, the environmental review analysis portion of this process. And most of the decision, most of the changes that you'd be looking at, little policy tweaks, if folks want to get into, you know, nitty-gritty detail on specific policy language, that's not going to affect the environmental analysis. And so, you know, I think there is still the possibility for, you know, continued review and discussion, decision. The environmental review timeline is going to take several months. If we're lucky, it's going to take several months. I mean, let's be frank, we've seen environmental reviews, EIRs, go on for quite some time before. So if we can get a, part of what we're doing here is trying to establish, you know, stable project description that the environmental review analysis is based on. Minor tweaks that don't affect the environment can be incorporated throughout the entire time. And then ultimately, if we get to a point, I mean, we do run the risk of saying, hey, look, you know, we've, we've made decisions, we've started environmental analysis, and now we want to change something big that's going to affect the environmental analysis, we'd have to redo that part of the environmental analysis. So all of these decisions do have consequences, timeline consequences, there's no question about that. But what we've established here, what we're recommending, what we're suggesting at the staff level is a framework that will get us to as much progress as quickly as possible to try and demonstrate to those, you know, various entities that we are, you know, taking the commitment seriously.
Yeah, I feel strongly that whatever, whatever we can do to stay on this timeline, we should, we should do. And I like the idea of encouraging some of these committees to hold a special meeting if they can so that it would enable us to have their view on the given issue before we take it up. I think that would be very useful. But I think if it means that we have to wait till the second pass, then that's better than extending the timeline. I want to agree strongly with John's assessment that at times we're getting bogged down, and it's keeping us from getting to some of the issues that I think are most important to the community and are just the bigger piece, issues that need more discussion.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just wondering how the City Council's going to get through this with all of this. I mean, we need to sort it through and organize it before we sit in, to them first, right? Or they're going to take two or three, four meetings. So, anyway, so do we have any more discussion about process?
Are you mind saying something?
Yeah.
So I concur with what Scott said, that we don't need to get bogged down and waste a lot of time on changes that are not, you know, grammar and other details. And I also concur with what John was saying, is that I like the idea of doing special meetings, I like the idea of keeping this up, constantly up to date, so that we can see it, the public can access it. And I just wanted to address that, I hear what you're saying about staying in our own lane, but one of the reasons that we were talking about concurrent versus sequential was because of the justification due to grant lines, deadlines, which is why David has chosen to do concurrent versus sequential.
Consequences.
Right. So that's why I felt like I needed that clarification to understand, because that was the justification for it. I'm all for doing this timely. I'm also for taking the time to do it right the first time. I'm not saying $160,000 isn't a lot of money, but this is going to affect Arcata forever. And if it comes down to that we might have to pay back $160,000, then so be it. And that's not to say that there's not an end date and we're just going to, you know, flounder out there, but I don't think it has to be all or nothing. I think that we need to be strategic, take our time, do it right the first time. And if we don't hit our deadline, I think they're going to see that we did our due diligence and we did what we needed to do to do it right. And I think that that's going to hopefully have some kind of, you know, on the outcome of what, you know, what that penalty will be or whether they come on in, you know, with some kind of initiating enforcement or whatever that might look like. Anyway, I don't know, I just said a lot.
I agree with you. I think in many ways, the $160,000 is really, in some ways, the least of it. I think we're, I know we're already dealing with huge impacts because of the housing crisis in Arcata from the presentation we had from the Open Door CEO. We're losing doctors, we're losing healthcare. Those impacts are happening already right now. We're losing students. I've talked to families who have had to send their students elsewhere, even though they've gotten into Cal Poly Humboldt because they can't find housing. There's a huge amount of impacts, including the homeless issue that we're already contending with. So I think the implications of some of these grant funding is important, but the impacts in Arcata are not limited to future grant issues. We're already living with them now, and they're only going to be exacerbated as we continue to struggle with this issue.
Okay, so I'm just going to open this up real quick for public comment, if anybody wants to talk about what we, our strategy, and then we'll move on to the housing chapter.
Thank you. I'm Fred Wise. I concur with or support Commissioner Davies calling for special meetings for the committees if that would help move things along. Commissioner Barstow said something that I don't remember, but I concurred with that also. I thought that was a good point. I'm afraid I don't remember. I can say, add, the commission can prioritize which are the more important elements and which are the ones which are required input from the committees. The, I want to shift gears. I did make printouts of some of the PowerPoint. I didn't know that David would be showing us tonight, or can hand them out. I want to turn your attention to page 29 of the packet. There is a paragraph that I'm going to read in my two minutes. It's called "Time Certain Review." The paragraph reads, "The engagement and review outlined by staff has a time certain period for review. This period is designed to maintain conformity with the housing element and the grant timelines. Maintaining this timeline will require committees and planning commission to commit to providing recommendations within the timeframe. This may be accomplished through special meetings, subcommittees, joint studies, sessions, or a variety of other means." First, I want to know, what is the timeframe that he's referring to here? Second, I want to point out to the commission that the phrase "time certain" is a legal phrase. This is not a legal document, but I think it might have legal precedent. I would ask the chair to ask David Loyah what that means. What does he mean by "time certain"? What does "time certain" refer to, and why did he use that phrase? Thank you. And here's three pages. One more thing. David has said that this is kind of a best-case scenario. I understand that. It allot one meeting to the City Council for staff report, questions, review, public comment, discussion, and a vote. I think that's unreasonable, given Arcata, given the way we are here. And that's my only comment on this. The, I'll also say that the presentation you gave to the City Council was substantially different. It's a blend. This has its points. I mean, there's a lot of new things here. I also love the colors. The, but I recommend the council, I mean, the commission look at the council one also. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, hello, Chris Richards again. I'm going to guess what he was referring to that John said was the, make sure we get this stuff up on the website for folks to see when this happens, because that, you know, that's going to build the confidence bigger than anything, or it's going to be, you know, what are we doing? You know, whatever the public comes up with for that. I agree with Kimberly on the ideology of getting it right. I mean, yeah, it would be nice to get housing started soon, but, you know, like you're saying, Scott, we're in a huge deficit with that. But they could, developers could be building houses today. It's not, there are places that could be happening, so I'm not buying into the argument that we have to rush through this and skip steps because we're missing, you know, these opportunities, because there's already... opportunities, because there's already opportunities that are available currently. Kimberly, I agree with you that $160,000 is a chunk of money, but when you look at the amount of millions of dollars of development that's going to happen over this plan, we really do need to get it right. And I think we're all on the same page with that. So, I mean, yeah, it's a shame that it takes longer than, you know, we hope for, but I think getting it right and doing the best we can is, is the goal for everybody. You know, success with Arcata and really making something special with this is really important. But thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone on the phone?
Hi. I would also say that I do support the concept of special meetings for the commissions. I think it could allow for a more complete recommendation of the ideas that they've been formulating, you know. It would allow the possibility to get them out of the silos, and just a more complete flow of ideas that they formulated. In addition, I was going to say that, I think I understood from what David said, as far as the two grants that were mentioned, the Salk grant and the SB2 LEAP grant, that those could both be potentially extended for a year. I could be wrong, but it sounded like that on the second pass, that might have been what came out. And, but I think in general, just this pathway of allowing for the commissions to present their ideas that they've been formulating, it's been going on for a while. I mean, pretty much since January, this whole process's been going, and there's not really been a whole lot that's moving forward out of the pipelines. This can ultimately allow the planning commission to deliver more complete ideas, and it will kickstart this, and it will allow for this process to move forward, because right now, I feel like it's stalling. So I think this, what we're talking about here, and everybody's recommendation, is absolutely in the right direction. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, this is Matt Simmons with the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. I just want to urge everyone to, you know, keep the schedule that staff has laid out, not only for the grant, but also for, you know, the potential for the state to step in and take away Arcata's authority over these issues. And then also, as the commissioner really helpfully pointed out, the fact that we're in a housing affordable, housing affordability crisis right now. There really is a urgency to this for the folks who are actually looking for apartments in Arcata right now. I, I mean, the vacancy rate is about 3%. It's just so hard to find somewhere to live in Arcata if you, if you aren't lucky enough to have bought a home a long time ago. And so I think the ideas mentioned of having special meetings so that, you know, the other committees can meet prior to the planning commission are great. I think encouraging everyone to try to handle, you know, one whole topic per meeting is a reasonable request. I mean, because if you, if you say that anyone can have three or four meetings on each topic, there's just no way we're ever going to be able to get through this. And so I think having everyone along and working together to do that is really important. And it's important, not just for people who care about housing, but for people who care about local control, which I know everyone in Arcata does, because the state is just getting more and more aggressive every year, in terms of what they're making local communities do in terms of housing. And so I think Arcata really needs to be proactive and stay ahead of the curve on that.
Great, thank you, Matt. I think your time's about up. Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep, better.
I'm sorry, I just decided to use Jim's phone, because for some reason, my microphone's not going on. So, yeah, I just wanted to first point out that I don't think it's, it's being recorded right now. It stopped recording quite a while ago, and so I just wanted to throw that out there. And, and then the other thing, so just a few quick things. I really like Commissioner Barstow's suggestion of putting more information on the website, or putting almost, you know, so things are more transparent. I would really recommend doing something like the county does with the McKinleyville infill project. They do a fantastic job of putting, like, letters that have been written in, and it's just really easy to read, and they put, it's very transparent. So I would like to throw that out there. There's also, I think we really need to contact Cal Poly again, and really have, really push for a dialogue with them. They, they're pushing for apartments for the students, and it's kind of concerning of what land will go to, for Cal Poly's use, for their students, and be taken away from the city of Arcata's use, and what lands are going to be annexed into the city of Arcata, maybe for potentially development, and hopefully, Cal Poly and the state won't be able to use that land for their own agendas, because I don't really, I'm not really feeling like their, Cal Poly's interest is really for the well-being of the city of Arcata. Right now, it's feeling like they're more for their, looking out for their own interests. So, and then that goes along with some of the mega developers, or the large developers, and hopefully, you know, it's like, the power of the almighty dollar, hopefully, the developers won't be selling out their land to the highest bidder, which will probably be the state and Cal Poly. So those are some concerns. I'd like to get some deeper dialogue and some deeper conversations with Cal Poly going from here forward. So anyways, I just want to put those few things out.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening again. Is this being recorded? Because aren't we supposed to be recording this? That's my question. It'd be nice to know if it's being recorded. I want to basically say, a lot of the points being brought up tonight are really, really valuable and valid, and I couldn't actually see David's chart very well, so it's hard to comment on that. But the better we can coordinate it, I do think it's frequent, a frequent issue that committees don't really submit recommendations. They listen to presentations, but then they don't necessarily do the work to write up recommendations, like we did with the Plaza Improvement Task Force. We only had four committees, I think, that did that, but they did it very well. So I think we need to encourage those committees to do that, and have special meetings as needed. I also like Kimberly White's comments and some of the others, because I think it's very important that we make this most effective plan for what we're trying to build and keep the character of the city. So, process is important, and I can't evaluate what David handed out in print, so I couldn't read it very well on the computer, so I can't comment on that. But let's keep on moving forward, and try to get as much input as we can. I'd like to see a survey further, on the topics that people are most concerned about, everything from building height to ministerial approval. Those are some of the critical ones, and of course, whatever we need to address in terms of infrastructure. So, hopefully, when we hear the presentation on the Form-Based Code on Wednesday, and hopefully, that will be followed up with specific examples that we can look at, because people understand things better when they can see them, whether they're pictures, or models, or even better. If we have that capability, we should start using it. So I hope we can do that, because people can then respond to something more concrete. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. And yes, this meeting is being recorded. I just heard from Juan in the back room. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I see none.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to housing, the housing chapter. Policy Chapter 3, Housing. So do you want to kick this off, or how do you want to go about this?
Yeah, I'll briefly just identify that the, you know, the housing policies in this, this chapter, which were included as Attachment A, starting on packet page 25, were intended to help the city, you know, meet its RENA goals as one objective, but really, this is a much longer plan, so to meet its RENA goals, far out into the future. And, you know, I guess the other thing I'll point out, you know, before turning it over to deliberations, which I'm sure there'll be many questions and much public dialogue, is that the, you know, the housing chapter, the policy embraces many of the things that we've heard, not just before the Gateway Plan was released, but also things that, you know, we've heard even just tonight, you know, some calls for affordable housing in different income levels, for example, calls for ensuring that there are ownership opportunities, for example, to have mixed-income neighborhoods, for example. And so, all of these policies that you see on packet pages 25 and 26, you know, they are, again, the higher-level policy that will be implemented through, you know, the zoning code. And I wanted to point to the housing implementation programs that are on packet page 26, that, you know, part of the plan calls for monitoring, you know, how well are we doing? Housing was cited as the single biggest priority leading up into this plan. And so the question is, how well are we doing? You know, do we need to tweak the plan to, to meet those objectives more effectively? And then the other issue that came up many times, you know, we're worried about displacing people, we're worried about displacing businesses, residents that live on some of these sites that are identified as key opportunity sites. And so there is a program that's identified in here for resident relocation assistance, and that we would be able to develop that out as an implementation of this tool that we're considering adopting. So, like to answer any questions that you may have about the housing policy. I know the housing policy goes way beyond just the Gateway Area Plan, but to the extent that we're focused on this and concentrated on this, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Who wants to start? Start at the end and work our way.
Yeah, I have to object to a couple of the policies here, 3J and 3K. So what we're aiming to do is create a, a form within which developers will be able to build what they, what they need, what they want to build, as long as they stay within the constraints of the form. So, 3J and 3K are to incentivize busting out of the form, basically, violating the form. And it's making it an incentive to, well, 3J says, allow increased development intensity and simplify development processes for projects that provide residential densities above established minimums. The simplified development processes, I assume, we're talking about the elimination of discretionary review. And, and my understanding is that's one of the benefits, or the goals of the Form-Based Code, is to streamline the permitting process. So, I just doubt the wisdom of incentivizing these changes in the form. When we get down to actually nailing down what the form is, and what the design criteria are, and so on, hopefully, we'll arrive at a, at a final product that will allow for as much density as we think we're going to need, without having to incentivize it. The 3K wants to incentivize larger residential densities in order to provide more affordable housing. Again, I think we need to have that included in our, in our form to begin with. I don't think it needs to be incentivized. I think what we do need is a, is a policy that says that if you want to violate the constraints of the form, it should be, be subject to discretionary review. So if you want to build a taller building, or you want to squeeze in more units, or whatever, and you can't do it within the, the constraints of the accepted and approved form, I think you should be subject to discretionary review. And as Judith pointed out, I think at the last meeting, the Form-Based Code and discretionary review are not mutually exclusive. But, you know, as I, as I just said, I believe one of the, the benefits of the Form-Based Code is that it would allow development within the form, but without extensive discretionary review. So, anyway, my recommendation is to eliminate 3J and 3K, and have a statement that discretionary review will be required whenever a developer wants to do something that doesn't fit within the specifications of the form.
Do you mind if I address that? So, I think maybe we weren't totally clear on exactly what that policy is intended to refer to, perhaps. So I'll, you know, refer back first to the policy 3J, which says to incentivize the densities above the minimum. The intent there is not, absolutely not, that those larger projects would break the form. In fact, the form is intended to constrain all development that is, you know, secured through that, that, the pathways, the streamlined pathways. But you can see that policy implemented in Table 7 of the, the plan. So here's the base tier. We've considered this before, where depending on the number of units, the building elevation height, you go into higher and higher community benefits tier. The higher community benefits tier would require more contribution towards those community amenities from the developer to the community, if they get into those higher tiers. And so at the base tier, the minimum residential density, dwelling units per acre is 18 units. At this base tier, there's a, you know, community benefits are basically conditioned. This is a typical planning commission review process. Community benefits- Community benefits are conditioned, and the baseline architectural standards are required, so they have to fit within the form. And the conditional use permit is required. And so this would be akin to, you know, and your design review approval. So at the lowest tier, we're not incentivizing development. Once you start getting above those minimum tiers, so you go, you know, minimum 27 units with, you know, a five-story building, then you get into the community benefits bonus tier 1, and the discretionary review is not required. This is the way that it was structured, as an incentive to try and have developers target our single biggest issue that was coming up in the community, which was to build more housing. And so if you, there's no additional amenities. Most of the amenities, like, you know, bus pass program for, you know, the folks that live there, the folks that work there, you know, things we've talked about, like net-zero buildings, you know, having, you know, contribution to, you know, trail program, whatever the amenities are that we decide as a community that we want these developments to pay into, instead of paying into a process. Since they're saving money on process, we have them put those dollars into the community. It's not like housing, having higher unit count, would be one of those amenities. It's just part of the way the review process works. And so that's kind of fundamental and foundational, and I want to make sure that we all understand that, the way that it was intended to be structured, so that you only get into streamlined review if you're building higher-density counts. In terms of the affordable housing component, the 3K, the incentivized affordable housing as a community amenity, this is a little bit, and it's not real clear in here, this is an area where we need to clarify, but there's a little bit of a carrot and a little bit of a stick, if you will. There's an incentive, and there's a bonus that goes along with affordable housing in this plan. Historically, the city has tried to use inclusionary zoning to add affordable housing stock when projects came in with affordable housing, or when projects came in for market-rate housing. Inclusionary zoning would require a certain proportion of those units, whether they're multifamily or single-family, to be dedicated to affordable units. And primarily, those were 80% or less area median income. We realized that projects weren't getting built unless the redevelopment agency or the grant programs were funding those affordable housing units. So the city was requiring affordable units, but because the unit counts were so low, the market-rate units weren't able to sustain that addition of, you know, the affordable housing. When redevelopment was dissolved in 2012, we also dissolved our inclusionary housing requirement, along with that, part and parcel. What we believe is the case at this point, based on, you know, preliminary modeling, is that unit counts that get up into the densities that we're talking about, where you might have, you know, 50 units, you know, per acre, 60 units per acre, you're likely to be able to transition back into an inclusionary zoning program, where when you hit that certain threshold, you have to provide a minimum level of affordable housing. And it's more units for the higher-income brackets. So you get higher credit for digging deeper into affordability levels. So that's sort of like the baseline requirement. And I'm not exactly sure what that number is yet. When we get into the code, we'll have to settle on that. But there should be an incentive for a project that comes along and says, "I want to go above that baseline. I want to be able to provide more affordable housing and have a mixed-income project." And that, I think, is, you know, once you get above and beyond the baseline inclusionary zoning program, that truly is an amenity that a project could bring to the community to make sure that, you know, there's that middle-income housing, for example. And that's one of the areas where I think we'd probably end up targeting the program, because it's the hardest for us to get with the grant programs that we have access to. And so that's what 3J and 3K were really intended to drive at, increased housing production, and making sure that we're targeting affordable housing in all income levels.
I understand what you're saying. So I just read 3J, and what it's literally saying is that increasing the residential density is a community amenity that allows you to increase the residential density.
Noted. I think we can work on language to make sure it says what I just said.
Could I ask a clarifying question? So just because you're increasing density doesn't equate that you're increasing affordable housing, correct?
Certainly not directly tied to, but the, there's several different pieces of the market at play in the policy that we're providing for here. So some of them target increasing unit count to try and help with the affordability, you know, problem writ large. The more supply there is, the more the affordability of those units can come into line with, you know, what people can actually afford. But there are specific incentives that require, specific incentives and requirements that will ultimately require that, you know, projects of a certain size are required to have affordable housing, and/or projects below that can elect to have affordable housing as one of the community amenity benefits. It's kind of what we've been talking about.
Right. So the inclusionary zoning that apparently went away when we got rid of the redevelopment, is that coming back possibly? Is that something?
Yeah, that is the proposal. And I don't have specific metrics on that, what the unit threshold would be before that would start to pencil. You know, again, each of these different, you know, requirements has to be balanced with the feasibility of bringing that product to market. You know, one of the ways I like to think about it is that, you know, I would like to drive a Ferrari. I see myself in a Ferrari. But I can afford to drive a Toyota. And so I drive a Toyota. We can want the most well-designed, most high-end, the best amenities possible for this community. I think we all want that. But we have to balance those desires with what the market can actually bring, you know, as a feasible project. And so I don't have this exact number yet, but I do think that there's, based on the initial work we've done, that there is a unit threshold that we get above. We're allowing for 10%. If you have a 60-unit apartment building, if you had 10% of those affordable to moderate-income households earning 120% area median income or less, that would be six units. Only six of those 60 units. And the rest could be open market. So, you know, initially, based on our initial sort of, you know, scenarios that we've run, I think that we're going to be able to bring required inclusionary zoning back.
So that would be one of the strategies that could go under 3F, perhaps?
Yeah. Yeah, I think some of these overlap a little bit. So 3F, as well as, well, it doesn't really belong in 3K. Yeah, 3F. Or 3H, for that matter.
Do you just want to go ahead and start? What else do you have to add?
I guess I was wanting to talk a little bit about 3I, about the owner-occupied housing for lower income through condominiums, deed, owner-occupied, and was wondering, would we want to maybe encourage, like, land trusts? Like, Humble Housing has a pretty good model that has worked. Cooperative housing can work for both rental and owner-occupied housing. I think that what I'm hearing out in the community just generally is, nobody can afford to buy, and everybody wants to have that opportunity. And if we build this in, we can make sure that those opportunities are there.
Yeah, the, I think 3I is intended to reflect that desire to ensure that there's owner occupancy, and also recognizing that, you know, many of these projects may ultimately be more of a, you know, multifamily structure. Even if it's townhomes, those are, you know, typically done with, you know, they're basically a multifamily, have many units, you know, either stacked right next to each other, or on the same parcel. So I think, you know, any of those structures, or structures that we haven't even thought of yet, that would accomplish these goals would be strongly encouraged.
Plan unit development, et cetera, right. And then 3L, the resident displacement. I guess that kind of makes a little red flag for me, is like, okay, we were talking about, we're not going to do eminent domain, we're not going to be getting rid of people. So I guess I'm wondering, who are these people, the residents, that are going to be displaced? Have we identified them? Or I guess just have questions about what that's going to look like?
Yeah, I'm not seeing that in 3F, but...
I'm sorry, L.
Yeah, so the, we, no, we have not identified specific residences that will be displaced. And no, there is no talk or reason for eminent domain. But when, you know, right now, if we are involved in financing a project, for example, with, you know, CDBG or home funds, or, you know, other state funds, there's a relocation requirement. And so, you know, part of that project comes with relocating the people who will be displaced. There's no such requirement for, you know, open-market decisions that don't have public participation. And so any of the property owners in the gateway who have residence or businesses operating on them right now, that, you know, that residence or business doesn't own that property, any of those landowners can decide tomorrow, "I'm doing something different with my land." We recognize that this policy document may encourage, in fact, that's the intent, is that through this work, we're actually going to encourage people to invest in our community, that they're going to bring these projects to our community. And as a result, if there are properties that have, you know, residence or businesses operating on them now, we want to have programs that are responsive to that. So if you look in the employment section, we have a similar policy that says we want to create a displacement program that helps those businesses move, or those residences move into, you know, safe, affordable housing. So nothing's been identified yet, and it's not anything remotely related to eminent domain. It's more a, I guess I would characterize it as a public-partner, a public-private partnership whereby the, you know, city is helping the, you know, private market to do right by existing residents.
And it's probably pretty obvious, it's probably right in front of me, but 3H, where it's talking about mixed-income neighborhoods, and it talks about affordable by design. Could you clarify what that means?
Yeah, I mean, this is just a, you know, including but not limited to list of ways to have mixed-income neighborhoods. You know, again, going back to the basic precepts, the City of Arcata has done really well at creating affordable housing, where you have to be under a certain income level to live in that affordable housing unit. And when you walk out the door, everyone that sees you walk out that door knows that you are a lower-income individual. We'd like to see a future where the door that you walk out of doesn't indicate your income. And so by creating mixed-income neighborhoods and mixed-income buildings that don't, you know, have those strings attached to them through a range of different, you know, protocols, like inclusionary zoning, incentivizing affordable housing, having these, you know, a mix of different unit types, some of which can be very small, micro-units. They're going to be affordable by design in the sense that, number one, there's going to be more of them. And so, you know, we'll have some affordability associated with the supply. But number two, that they will be affordable because of the size of the unit, the size of the cost, and the per-unit cost there. Right now, if you structure all, so right now, there's no upper limit to density. You can take the same space and parse it up into large units, or parse it up into very small units, under the existing plan. You have approximately the same number of people living in that building. It's just, how big is the unit? Is it a family-sized unit, or, you know, so on and so forth? If you regulate maximum unit count, in particular in our current market, and market as it's been since I've worked for the City of Arcata, which really drives towards smaller units, in particular for students, what you end up getting is large units, like a four-bedroom, with four bathrooms. So they're effectively telling us, in the projects that they're bringing forward, what I really want to build is four studios, but your density is limiting me. I can't build four units, I can only build one. So I'm going to build one large with four bedrooms. So removing that from the equation, this allows the market to build a variety of different housing types, some of which are going to be micro-units, where they're more affordable for the person that's renting them, but for the person who's building them, you also have a, you know, a better per-unit cost return on the investment. So it's a, you know, a little bit of give and take.
Thank you. And then, right after we talk about student housing, it says moderate-income owner-occupied condominiums and townhouses. I guess I was just wondering what happened to lower-income ones? It's not to exclude them, I'm thinking, right?
No, it's not intended to exclude. I mean, again, I think this is just a list of ideas that exemplify how you can, you know, end up with mixed-income neighborhoods through this policy. You know, the implementation programs that we develop, and, you know, the regulations that we develop around, you know, tenancy of those units, is how we would ultimately regulate that. But it's just to give the idea that we want to have mixed-income neighborhoods.
I understand that. I guess for me, it's just, I'm looking at it, and it's like, well, is it truly mixed income if the only people who can afford to be owner-occupied are moderate? So just was hoping that we could somehow make sure that we include those who are below the moderate income. And then, yeah, just wondering where the lower-income owner-occupied opportunities would be, and maybe a way to encourage somehow incentivizing.
Yeah. I guess, you know, we can certainly modify the language and add lower income to that list. The GA3I identifies affordable housing for lower-income folks. So these aren't, you know, they're used in concert. They're taken together, you can have a mixed income. And just because mixed-income neighborhoods doesn't list affordable for lower-income folks, the owner occupancy for lower-income folks is also one of our policies. So I think in total, if you look at it, you know, globally, we include all of those concepts in there.
No, I absolutely love the idea that you don't know your neighbor's income. You don't know if they're getting subsidized housing, or they're in Section 8. Yeah, I love that idea that we are not ostracizing folks, and that everybody can have an opportunity to live in a mixed-income neighborhood. Which I guess answered my other question, is, were we going to incentivize affordable housing units in each complex? Or, you know, they're not going to be segregated? No, so, just looking for my answer, sorry. I think that was it.
How about we put in that sentence, including but not limited to? Because I can imagine, like, 50 different other things that we didn't list in this list that could also be included.
Not trying to split hairs.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that we address equity issues.
David, I have a question about making sure that there are homeownership opportunities. I know that it's going to take, from the ROI perspective of developers, some kind of incentive to make sure that there's lower-income opportunities for rental and homeownership. But how can we, or what is the mechanism by which we can also try to ensure that there's a strong proportion of homeownership opportunities, whether it's condos, or penthouses, or whatever income range versus rental?
Yeah, that is, you know, something that, you know, I think we are, you know, being aspirational about in this document. The nuts and bolts of how that would work, you know, is going to be left to our monitoring, I think. It's possible that we, if we want that, you know, strongly enough, that we actually make that a, you know, community amenity, that if you're providing, you know, ownership opportunities, you know, within these mixed-unit buildings, you know, that that, you know, that will help to drive the market. The city can't regulate and say, "You have to build ownership opportunities here." And I think if we did, I mean, I, there are a couple of developers who are, you know, very... very amenable to doing condo projects. But if you talk to the, you know, average realtor on the street, when I met with the Humboldt Association of Realtors, they told me that there's no way you're going to get condominium projects. And this was, you know, hot on the heels of the condo project in Florida that, you know, that basically fell apart. And insurance companies get, you know, a little anxious, you know, when things like that happen, so. But at the same time, I mean, I think that there are a lot of things that we're going to be looking at in this document that, under current market conditions, may seem slightly aspirational, but they give us a goal to work towards. They give us an opportunity to say, this is what we want to see in our community and now we need to develop programs to implement that. You know, I'd like to think that what we have in the document at this point is, you know, nothing in there is so aspirational as to, you know, be impossible. But there are some, you know, pretty lofty goals. And so through the, you know, through the monitoring, we would, you know, be able to tweak, you know, potentially tweak amenities over time. Hold on a second, I want to make sure that Zoom is still running.
I guess we, I just wish that homeownership opportunities for those who are not rich and famous wasn't considered a lofty goal. And I know that we can't build that in. I live in a condo. And I know that at one point, there were developers from out of the area who were proposing condominiums. And I don't know why Arcata was not amendable to this, but, yeah. It seems like there have been opportunities that have been turned away. And I don't know if that was before your time or what that looked like, but.
Yeah, we have a couple of condo projects in the City of Arcata, but not many. The, you know, the market just hasn't really been in that direction. And just super brief, you know, we have one that was, I mean, similar to the community you live in was planned as a condo project. They're all single-four condos, so it's more like a planned development.
No, actually, they're townhouses with four rent-style on the corner. So there's 31 units.
Okay, so townhouses. But I mean, it's not like a multi-story building where you're having an airspace subdivision. It's actually just a ground court subdivision. We have a condo project on K Street, which was an apartment conversion. Again, just, you know, two, two floors, but that, I believe, is an airspace subdivision. And then one of the Danko projects was required to be an airspace subdivision. Danko also tried to coordinate to do a subdivision project and couldn't get that to work. And so they ultimately didn't do a, you know, condo project on that one. So it has varied over time, whether or not condos work out. But I think just because they haven't historically worked out, heaven's hens, doesn't mean that they won't.
I didn't have my mic on, sorry. I have to apologize, for some reason Zoom crashed and I can't get it to come back up. So for those in the Zoom world, I'll keep trying. But I apologize for whatever technical difficulties we seem to be having. I believe we're going out on public access and YouTube. We're just not going out on, on the web right now. I don't have internet connection for some reason. So I'll try and troubleshoot this as we continue with the deliberations.
Okay. So I had a few things that I wanted to talk about. I know we said we weren't going to go line by line, but, and I'm not. But on page 25, where the third sentence down, it says, new housing will feature, new housing will feature, that should probably be changed. The city will encourage and support new housing featuring a range of unit sizes because that just makes it more cohesive because we talk about encouraging. So I feel like that should be changed. And then. So on three B.
I'm sorry, Chair, will you repeat the word that you think needs to be changed?
Oh, on the third line down over under overview, it says, new housing will feature.
Recording in progress.
I feel like it should just say the city will encourage.
Recording stopped.
New housing featuring a range. It's just a small change, but it, we use the word encourage in here. It just kind of goes together, so.
Okay.
Then I think it's three B. So we're saying there's not going to be any max density at all? I mean. I understand when we get to the design chapter, we'll discuss design, but is this a good idea? I mean, no max density? Height setbacks, minimum unit sizes to collectively establish a natural limitations on the dwelling units to be developed per lot? I don't, I don't feel like that's what the public wants.
Yeah, again, this is getting back to the, you know, conversations around the, you know, the market bringing, you know, basically doing workarounds to bring what, you know, what the market is asking for. And instead of regulating the total number of units, you know, instead of looking at the total number of individuals that live within that space, you know, ultimately, you're not going to fit, you know, a four-person household in a, you know, micro unit, 200-square-foot unit, you know, exclusive of the, you know, sanitation and other facilities. So approximately 500-square-foot unit. And so it's, you know, to house that four-person household, you'd either need four of those micro units or one, you know, four-bedroom unit, perhaps, one three-bedroom unit. And so instead of regulating the maximum number of units within the building, again, concentrating on the form and the function. And if the market is driving towards, hey, we need a bunch of micro units to satisfy that demand, you know, then we might initially get, you know, some micro units. And those would fill out at rates that, you know, provide for, you know, that housing type as it's necessary and within the forms that we define within our standards. And then when the pendulum starts to swing back and say, well, no, you know, we need, we need, you know, housing for families. We need, you know, some market rate housing for families because we have, you know, moderate income folks coming in and they want to buy houses. Then this plan allows for that to develop as well. And I do think that we've heard, at least from my experience from the public, that they are less concerned about unit count and more concerned with housing access. And that's, that's why it was brought in this way. But I certainly think that's, you know, for deliberations and discussion.
Well, I know a few years ago when we started talking about this, one of the complaints we got from a lot of people was that there are too many people crowded into one unit. So. That's not healthy. So I'm just wondering if we should kind of limit the density or somehow control that so you don't have six people in one bedroom? That sort of thing.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. I think that, again, is part of the reason why we're asking for, you know, market solutions to those housing issues. You know, we see single-family housing stock, or historically have seen single-family housing stock converted over that way to where, you know, basically anywhere there was to lay down, you'd have a person sleeping in there and, you know, people sharing with the unit to make it a little more affordable. And our, our standards for, you know, maximum unit count actually drove that trend instead of, you know, resolving that trend. And then we had a couple of developments. The Tea Gardens is a good example of a development where they came in and they were proposing, I think they were like close to 2,000-square-foot units, four-bedroom, four-bath, one kitchen, that was essentially rented like, you know, a quad you might see in a student housing development, and they're primarily rented to students. And so, you know, part of that did inform, you know, this recommendation to go that, that direction. I mean, I do think that, you know, the intent is to try and help meet the demand by allowing higher unit counts, more development of units, so that you don't have those overcrowding issues. And then in terms of like direct overcrowding, I mean, we don't really regulate that on the front end. You know, if it becomes a health and safety nuisance, you know, we would regulate it on the back end. Any project that we're involved in, obviously, we have standards around housing overcrowding. But that's something that actually is identified right now. We have higher-than-average rates of housing overcrowding in our community in the last couple of housing element cycles.
And then on, I just feel like we suggest a maximum and then three, three C also suggests a minimum rather than having it out there. Then on three H, what you guys, you and Kimberly were just talking about, it talks about mixed-use neighborhoods. And I think we should encourage mixed-use buildings and neighborhoods, but it doesn't say buildings in there. Or does it?
On three H?
Three H. Mixed-income neighborhoods, but it should say, I would like, if we could go further and encourage mixed-income buildings.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
See that mixed?
Go ahead.
So that the mixed use isn't just over the neighborhood, but specific to each building?
Right.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
That was the same question I had, was are we going to segregate by complexes? So the folks over here are the affordable housing and easily identifiable. And I understand that's not your intent, but I'm not sure that that's clear in how it's read. Or maybe it is and I'm just not seeing it. I don't know if we need to be more succinct in saying that, you know, just because you, yeah, we don't want to segregate people into buildings.
Yeah, no, it's an easy change.
And then, under 3K, you guys already kind of went over it, but are we going to put any numbers or percentages in here? Any hard rules or we just go in with market? Because I, I feel like we should specify a certain percentage that should be reserved for, you know, affordable housing. I don't know if that's possible or not. If that's something we talk about in design or is that something we talk about here?
Yeah, I mean, I think I was originally envisioning that more specificity would be in the code. You know, you can certainly identify it in the policy level. I think we're going to need to get into a little bit more, you know, analysis to see what the appropriate trigger point, the appropriate unit count for a threshold to trigger the inclusionary zoning. And again, this, you know, this one is to, you know, incentivize residential density. I'm sorry, affordable housing. And this, you know, would be paired with the, you know, inclusionary zoning program, so. I can, I can certainly spend a little more time on that. I don't have a recommendation for you right now.
You're just taking feedback. So where is the inclusionary resort, inclusionary zoning going to go? Which chapter?
That would be in this housing chapter and it's not real clearly articulated at this point. That was one of the comments that was made early on that I think, you know, we need to flesh that out a little more clearly.
Okay, and then I had one more thing that I want us to just think about. I really like the Redwood City's specific plan. I read it a lot. I love the idea that they have large projects and small projects. And the small projects are pretty much streamlined. They're administrative and they just go right through. But the larger projects, say for example, four or five stories or 48 feet or however tall a four-story is, that would come, that would be discretionary. I think the public would like that better. And I know why you don't want to do that because, like the Village, for example, came back and back and back. But there is a way we could streamline and we can just kind of write in that once you go past two planning commission meetings, it goes straight to the council if it gets rejected. I mean, there is a way to streamline that so it's not, so that, and so that the public could have a say. And this is going to be a huge change in these large structures. But I just wanted to throw out that idea because I think it's a good compromise because the public is really upset about these tall buildings. I think they're more upset about tall than they are about mass. So it was just an idea that they do and I think it's kind of smart. Of course, there, anything over 12 stories there is like large. Here, anything over like five stories is big. But anyway, I just want to throw out that idea. I think it's a good one. And there are ways that we can still streamline it, the large projects. That will still be, you know, an invitation or an incentive still for large developers to come here or our large developers and build. And I think everybody else took the rest of my comments. So if no one else has anything else that they want to throw out, we can open it to the public and see. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I had wanted to mention that the, the streamlining piece, we will be having a presentation by Ben Noble, who's helping write the code associated with this and is on the project team with Plan West to develop the, you know, the Gateway Area Plan. And part of what we'll be going over is, you know, form-based codes and the different permitting pathways. And so that'll happen tomorrow, actually at lunchtime, from noon to about 1:30, we're anticipating. So about an hour of presentation, about a half an hour of question and answer. And that is, you know, on our homepage. It's on the main landing page for cityofarcada.com, down at the bottom, in upcoming events. So you can find it easily and it's going to be held on Zoom. That meeting will cover that topic. And in addition, we're going to use that meeting through, you know, YouTube engagements to be able to do a variety of follow-up engagements for folks who can't meet tomorrow at noon. But we will, you know, try and address those topics there. It's a, you know, somewhat in-depth conversation that we can, you know, certainly bring back. And I intended to talk about this more when we got into design with the Planning Commission and after we've had a little bit of a discussion with the community about this process as well.
So if we sign in, none of us can talk, we can only listen. Otherwise, it's a brownout violation. But I'm going to sign in and listen, just keep my mute on. So, does any member of the public like to come up and address all of these things we've been talking about?
I sent a packet to the planning commissioners individually today and I put it on the arcadawon.com website. I apologize for the lateness. Didn't expect you to read it or reply because it was late for you. There's a lot to talk about. I consider this section to be the most crucial section. I'm all in favor of design and open space and everything else. But this is really where all the things that we've been hearing about, affordability, units for, for single parents, this is where it is. I'm going to, I have to be really brief. The, sometime back, February 8th, Commissioner Tagney, who's not here, of course, he said, "I sure hope this ambitious development in Arcata will include a lot, a lot of options for homeownership." Echoing what Commissioner Davies said. And it's, we're, I have an article, arcadawon.com about this. We're at 30%, 37% homeownership right now. Unless there's more than 37% in these projects, that situation will be worse. It takes a lot to make it better, but that's another story. The, the figure of 3,500, there's all kinds of questions where that comes from and also the speed at which this will happen. In the city's FAQs, it says that it may be 500 units in 20 years. That won't satisfy the demand at all. We certainly hope it's faster than that. The, let's see. The, in terms of the micro-units, they are more affordable. But it doesn't mean that they are affordable. I look at Santa Cruz a lot. I think they're about 20 years ahead of us. A 500, a 400-square-foot unit in Santa Cruz now rents for $2,700 a month. There are developers who are building 200 units in a single building of that. I suggest that you, as a different commissioner said, regulate the numbers of micro-units in the building. I am running out of time, so I'm going to say, do something bold. Don't do something normal or we're just going to have more of the same. Even if it means creating new law, I think the state of California is ready. I know a lot of these things are not feasible by current regulations. Let's change that. We're innovative here. We can do something. It's going to take some, some work, but it can be done. The, in closing, I will say, it's my opinion that the idea of more supply makes things more affordable is a big myth. It's proven again and again. The, the demand here is almost insatiable, as we all know. If we had 5,000 units. almost insatiable, as we all know. If we had 5,000 units, all right, let's not say 5,000. If we had 2,000 more units, they'd be filled in, in hours. I'm exaggerating a little bit, but I think you get my point. There's a huge, huge demand that 500 or 1,000 or 2,000 units is not going to supply. Thank you.
Yeah. Hello again, Chris Richards. Couple of comments. Let's see, Scott, Commissioner Davies is mentioning the homeownership opportunity component. That seems to be one of the biggest struggling points, especially for developers wanting to give that away. I know it's been brought up that the city could possibly use some of their properties or even acquire more property and develop some programs for homeownership in Arcata. I know that's, that's happened other places and that's something that I've heard suggested. I'd like to hear, you know, maybe more talk about that as a possibility to help bring the homeownership percentage rates up. Let's see, what else? On three, let's see, GA 3C, the minimum density requirements. Your final, let's see, it says, "Projects that do not provide the designated minimum residential density will need a use permit demonstrating they support the gateway area objectives." And I'm wondering if that covers, say you have a landowner that wants to do a small village or some, you know, some, some project that doesn't fit this high-density goal that everybody wants to. Is that, is that meant for that? Is that a way for folks, they go through the traditional planning for those type of projects and then, I guess, that statement, it just, I think it needs to be written a little more clear where folks that have property can develop more in the way they want to, even if it doesn't meet, you know, high density, if, as long as they're providing housing and maybe open space on their properties, that kind of a thing. Let's see. Yeah, I don't know that I have anything else. I like the discussion. Certainly learning a lot and I read this over my mind, but when you guys are talking about it, it certainly brings it more to life. I'm glad I came to the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Hi, everyone. Matt Simmons with the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. First, I'd like to say that the Gateway Plan lays out a very thoughtful approach to housing and how to incentivize its construction locally in a way that is environmentally sustainable and socially equitable. Across the state, we can see that streamlining the pathway to housing development leads to more units and less homelessness. I take issue with an earlier statement that increasing supply does not compact affordability. There are numerous state studies showing that increasing supply can impact affordability. I'm currently living in an apartment and my landlord just increased my rent. And the reason the landlord can increase my rent is because someone else could pay more for my apartment. You know, it's just how the, yeah. We particularly like Gateway 3, GA 3C, the minimum residential density requirement. This is a really innovative way to ensure that the development in the city addresses our housing needs. I said this earlier, but continuing to push for a quick timeline on action here because of the urgency of the crisis. You know, I worry that if Arcata doesn't build dense housing, we'll become like so many other coastal cities in California that are just entirely unaffordable and that, you know, lock out an entire generation of folks. And in terms of homeownership, I really think the discussion of condominiums is really helpful. You know, if you, if you build a taller building with multiple condominiums, you're building just so many more opportunities for homeownership than if you're sticking to, you know, single-family homes. So that's, I think, something that the city should continue to look into, making those opportunities for multifamily homeownership. That can include co-ops and community land trusts too, as creative ways to do that. Yeah. So in conclusion, let's, let's keep this plan moving forward because we desperately need this. Housing density is essential for our climate goals. And I really am excited for the future that we're creating here.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jane.
Hello again. I wanted to suggest that since any number of changes have been recommended by various planning commission members and/or maybe by the public, that it would be very useful to have those changes reflected in the draft for presentation next time around. Also, there's a problem with public comment when you don't hear, it would be really nice to see what the changes look like so we could react to those changes once we see them as discussed today. So I would love to have the revised version based on these changes made available at the next planning commission meeting. That would be terribly helpful. And it's also, since we don't have time to get public comment in before we, before the packet gets out, we haven't seen the packet, so we don't know what's being proposed. So our public comment is necessarily always late, can't get in the packet. So please put the public comment in next time around before the next meeting so that those comments get reflected, particularly when they're substantive. So I'd like to request that that happens so the public can, in essence, look at what the revised version is. And maybe that would also be in time for the committees to be able to look at that as well before they make their recommendations. And I would ask each of those committees to please make a set of recommendations in writing that can be delivered to the planning commission. And I certainly agree with the concept of having them do special meetings as needed in order to, if they want their input to have, if they want to have input, they need to take the time to sit down, go through the thing, make recommendations, write them up and submit them. That can be done. It has been done, was done with the positive improvement task force. I'd like to get it done here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane. I'm not seeing any more.
Okay, thank you. I just have one more comment. And if this is a dumb idea, I'm blaming Fred because he said be bold. So in my former life, I was a Fannie Mae underwriter and I knew even before Florida, the condos, getting condominium financing is kind of, it's a little bit tricky. It totally can be done. I'm wondering, what about forming like a citizens committee quickly with lenders and people in the know, Redec, you know, Greg Foster and all those people and see if they could kind of explore some ways that we could have some homeownership opportunities and how it could be financed, you know, how it could, we can incentivize developers to build it because somebody's got to build it. I'm just wondering if we should tap into our, we have great talent here. That's a, why not?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great suggestion. And we have a group that evolved out of, initially out of emergency response to the pandemic, that was focused primarily on, you know, economic development, that transitioned to, you know, cover several different topic areas. And over the past two years has been meeting regularly. At this point, we have kind of three different groups that meet weekly, regional groups that meet weekly, have sort of divided into different subject areas. And there's actually one group that is focused real squarely on, on housing. And those are, you know, you know, those kinds of solution sets are, you know, part of the purview of this regional group. Sorry, I got a frog in my throat. So certainly, I think, you know, when we make some, some progress towards, you know, formulating a, you know, a body of recommendations that, you know, would assist regionally, you know, the idea is to bring that to the decision-makers and start having that conversation, you know, at that level. You know, and I can certainly float that group that, you know, that's of interest, you know, to this, this commission, I think it'd be of interest to most folks. And that's, that's definitely one of the areas that we've discussed is, you know, how do we get these things, you know, pulled together? Going way back to the original conception around this, this work, you know, several, several years ago, that really is one of the components. You may recall the, the image of the person being pulled apart in different directions. One of those directions was, you know, banking and financing, you know, that, that branch of what it takes to build development. And certainly, you know, we are working, you know, at the staff level, we're working with those, those different entities locally. And I think, you know, truly, at the end of the day, we're going to have to, you know, broaden that outreach to, you know, you know, beyond our region. But I think that within our region, we have a lot of resources. So we can, we can bring an update on that group to this, to this, the planning commission.
David, could I say something just to piggyback on that idea? I really like it. Lulu Michelson, myself, Laura Norman, and another person who's been involved in cooperation on, but we did a housing sprint. And so we've already laid the groundwork. It would be a great thing to kind of gather what we've already done, the thing with the CIRC housing group. And I really like the idea of an advisory committee. I think we could get it together rather quickly and get some great ideas that we can hopefully forge ahead with. And then kind of on that of getting creative and being bold, somebody had mentioned that, you know, a survey might be apropos. And we have an untapped resource right there at Cal Poly-Humboldt that would be ready to do that kind of work too. So anyway.
Yeah, we could certainly look into that. You know, surveys are tricky to do scientifically. There's been a request at the council, you know, a public member requested that the council, you know, commit some funds to doing a survey. We've done a couple of surveys that are more around visioning that, you know, don't require the same, the, you know, sort of scientific rigor. And so we have done surveys in the past. And so, you know, I think it's something, you know, worth exploring, but we also, recognizing the, you know, limitation on our, you know, capabilities and capacity, have been focusing on other areas right now. You know, certainly if the, you know, if the council wants to see that form of survey, they've been, you know, asked to direct staff to, you know, and dedicate the resources to conduct that survey. I think that, that idea is out there.
I understand the limitations financially. I guess I was suggesting a quantitative survey done by maybe graduate students in the sociology department, the business department, governmental planning department. It could also work as one of their thesis projects and possibly even get them employed later on because they would do wonderful work, I'm sure.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's definitely something we can explore. Certainly don't want anybody to walk away from this, you know, thinking that we're committing to that at this point.
Okay. So are we done with this housing element? Did you, you say everything that you wanted to say?
I'm done.
Too bad Judith isn't here. But anyway, okay. So you have all of our feedback, all of our suggestions. So we are going to move on to correspondence and communications.
The only things that I have for the commission, we've already hinted on, so I'll just reiterate them here so they're formally in the record. Tomorrow at noon, we're having a form-based code discussion with the community, first part of two-part program. Tomorrow's program is primarily, you know, education out to the community and then answering questions that come out as a result of those about what a form-based code is, how it can be used in the gateway and different permitting options. The second phase of that, that we're, is still under development, will be to start digging into design. And that'll be sort of the kickoff to more of the community design process. You know, again, assuming that, you know, those, those work products will be useful regardless of the form of the documents that we ultimately adopt. So folks should look for that on our website, the main page down at the bottom where we have upcoming events and news. You will find the links to that. And then the second thing I had was to remind commissioners who haven't yet gone and taken the doodle poll for the, the next study session. The July 12th study session was canceled, so we're trying to schedule a new one, take that doodle poll so we can get a date that works for the majority of folks. And I believe that's all I have.
Does Judith, did Judith respond? Was she able to get?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to check.
Maybe you can send her a text or something, make sure she responds because we, it's really important that as many of us are there as possible. So you have a question?
I guess I lied. I do have one more question. I was just curious, the, the community block grant, there was several proposals that obviously are not going to be funded, but there was one that was really intriguing about some city-owned land, I believe out in West End. Maybe it was Bell Floor, that there was some discussion about some condominiums possibly on city property. Does that ring a bell? Just wondering whatever, I know it's not going to be funded as part of the CBDG grant, which was a research study, I believe, feasibility study perhaps is what was, what you were looking for. But I got real excited about that because there's two city-owned parcels that could create home, homeownership opportunities for affordable homeownership opportunities. And the condos were already brought to the table or it was on our, one of the proposals.
Yeah, I can't really speak to that at this point. It's not ringing a bell from the list, but I can look into it and maybe reach out to you offline.
Okay.
Okay. And just to remind the public, we have a change in schedule because we have vacations because it's summer and that we still do have our email addresses. If you guys ever, anybody wants to send in anything, we'll get it. The only other thing, David, is the, the public letters, they're never in the package. Are they just not getting them in on time? Is that what the problem is?
I'll have to look into, you know, what the issue was there. You know, our intent is to, to bring those forward. When we receive them, you know, we bring them forward at the next meeting. If there's something that slipped through the crack, I'll have to, you know, I mean, I take responsibility for that and I'll have to, you know, find it and bring it forward the next time.
Is there anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.